Well, we could start and hold off any votes. Hopefully Bruce will join us at some point.
I think that's a good idea.
Good, okay. Let's begin, alright? Wow, we can't even do our minutes, but let's move on to some old business then if we could, or communications.
Okay, we have April and May that we have to go over because with the COVID stuff, we did not have an April meeting. The majority of the correspondence, including April, were basically letters of support for multimodal and DCED grants and some other things. The only letter that was in was a letter that Matt sent to Greenman Peterson on the Scranton Gardner Charter School, and they did submit a plan later on after the letter. Other than that, as I said, everything is basically just letters of support. Couple of trail projects in the Mid Valley, one up in Dalton. Anybody have any questions?
No questions? Let's move on to old business then, transportation. You've been doing everything via Zoom?
Transportation, that's been a lot of fun. We've been doing everything virtually. A lot of the PennDOT offices, both the district and the central offices, people are working from home. So phone calls are basically out of the question because when you call, you don't know if you're going to get returns or when you're going to get them. So everything is being done by email and virtual. And PennDOT actually had a virtual web conference about two weeks ago to go over how to have public meetings. One of the problems that we're having because of the COVID, with Sapa, with the long-range plan, with a couple of other issues, we would be having a lot of public meetings right now and public hearings on these projects. And we can't really do that, so we're doing it virtually. As far as the long-range plan, we've done a couple of virtual focus group meetings last week. We have another one coming up next week. Actually, the focus groups have kind of worked. One of the things PennDOT is not allowing or using Zoom for their meetings because of some hacking issues. So they're primarily using Skype. We've been using Zoom in the office. We've also used Microsoft Office Teams. So there's a lot of different formats. Trying to keep up with how different formats work is a little bit difficult, but that's where we're at right now. As you can see from the agenda, both in April and May, a lot of the work has been not put on hold, but slowed down considerably. As I mentioned, the long-range plan, we are moving with that. Both the natural resources and the environmental focus groups that we had last week, we had between 35 and 50 people participate.
Wow, that had to be a challenge.
Yeah, it was. We were using the chat box for a lot of communication back and forth. We tried to hold off on having people actually talk because of the talking over each other, but it did work. A few times we had to have discussions. It is something that is working. Transportation network planning. PennDOT had a virtual workshop last, I'm trying to think now, days are running together, but on Tuesday.
What day is today?
What's that?
What day is today?
Thursday, I think. The regional operations plan, that is the traffic control center that they have at the district office that works from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. On the off-hours and the weekends, it shifts down to District 8, Dalton County. They control the eastern section. That's all the message boards, the cameras, the automated weather systems and all those. We have to update the regional operations plan every few years. PennDOT really didn't have a schedule. The last operations plan was about 11 years or 12 years ago. So we're in the process of updating that, and PennDOT is trying to get it to where they'll be updating the ROP. There's four regions in the Commonwealth, but they'll be updating the ROP for each region, basically around the updates of the tip and the long-range plans. Our ROP is basically focused on Interstate 81 and the turnpike Interstate 84-380, looking at alternatives for detours, what would need to be done for those detours, additional variable message boards, highway radio, those kind of things. The original plan was to have three public meetings and three stakeholders' meetings. We actually had one in-person meeting and one stakeholder meeting in person. Everything else has been done virtually. That is scheduled to be finished sometime in June or July, so that will work out good for us in updating the long-range plan. There was also a conference call that I took part in. The agency coordination meetings. Harry, you remember the old ACMs?
Yeah.
Where when you're doing a project, you have to go down to Harrisburg and present to a board that's made up of all of the federal and state agencies, environmental, historic commissions, those kinds of things. It's a very cumbersome process. The people that are involved are usually people from outside of the area that aren't aware of the projects. So it's an evolved process, and over the years, the department has been trying to streamline it. So they have McCormick Taylor doing these workshops with various planning partners across the Commonwealth to try and find out what is working, what isn't working, and how to make the system better. And one of the suggestions that came out of our meeting and the other meetings is rather than have the people from the Bureau's offices in Harrisburg on the ACM, hold ACMs around the state with the regional representatives. For instance, the DEP rep for solid waste and for stormwater from this area had them participate rather than somebody from Harrisburg. So I think that's probably one of the ideas that's going to come out of this, to hold ACMs at least in regions of the state. I don't know how they would set that up right now, but rather than have it in Harrisburg. For us, it's not bad. It's only a two-hour ride to Harrisburg, but one of the complaints came from, you know, people like out in Erie or up in the Northwest. It's a four-hour ride for a half-hour meeting and four hours back, so, you know, it's a full day for a half-hour.
Last time we did the ACM was for the KC Highway.
We did it for the KC and we did it for the first long-range plan.
Yeah.
And it was funny because when we were talking about it, I had mentioned that when we did our long-range plan, we were supposed to meet with the ACM in Harrisburg in January, and we had a snowstorm. So they actually had the meeting on a conference call. So we were kind of the first ones to do it, even though it wasn't planned to be that way about 10 years ago. And it actually worked for us.
Because of this coronavirus, are they extending your contract or they're just going to bank all that extra money?
The PennDOT contracts, everything is based on, in reality, we work on the state fiscal year, but the money comes on the federal fiscal year to the state. So we really don't have delays and you can carry over your funds, so that's not a big problem.
Oh, they will let you carry over, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not going to lose any money?
On the planning side, right now, we will not lose any money. I will mention with the CARES Act that the feds passed, there is some stimulus money there for transportation projects. We had a meeting with the district and Luzerne County and everybody in District 4, we had a virtual meeting two weeks ago to go through the existing tip to see what projects might possibly qualify. There's really no parameters or regulations yet on how to spend the money, but we're lining up projects that, if you remember the old Obama shovel-ready projects, it's kind of be the same thing, projects that can move ahead without a lot of delay so that we could actually get shovels in the ground. So we came up with a list of projects and that was submitted to Central Office, and they're putting those projects in our list. So when we get the parameters from the feds, we'll be ready to start spending some money.
Anybody have any questions on transportation? Counselor, Zero. Nice of you to join us, we needed you. Can't hear you, Bruce.
Bruce, are you going to mute it?
I don't have you muted. You should be able to speak. Oh, there you are, okay. We can't hear you.
It's pretty unusual you can't hear an attorney, isn't it? Better enjoy it while you can.
Bruce, there may be a way you could call in on the telephone as well. When we go to a vote, if it's a yes, raise your hand. Raise one hand if it's a no, raise two. Okay, we can do that.
It works.
Should I continue with the old business then?
We do have a quorum. Yeah, let's continue with old business and we'll come back and take care of our minutes and bills later on.
Okay.
Okay.
The downtown bicycle study, we have not had any in-person meetings. We've had a few conference calls with the consultant in Luzerne County. It's moving along. The last conversation I had with Stephanie, they should have the draft report done again in June, so we're not looking for an extension right now, and that will again fall into place with the long-range plan and the regional plan. The main thing they were working on before the pandemic hit was the changes to River Street in Wilkes-Barre and the changes on Locklon Avenue in Scranton that had come out of the focus group meetings. So they've come up with some new designs that we're still looking at. But again, that'll be something we'll be working on probably next month. We should have a report for the board.
Anybody have any questions on bicycle network? Good. Sapa?
You're up, Mayor.
Sapa, yes. We were in the process of the local planning commissions reviewing their ordinances when this all hit. We had a regional public open house scheduled for April 21st at the Votech School, which we had to cancel. When the virus hit, we put the project on hold. We did send a letter to DCED requesting that the project be extended for one year, which I did speak with Ted Ritzek last week, and he did say the DCED did approve that. They were still waiting for the contract division to give the okay, but he didn't think there was going to be an issue with it. So basically, we're just waiting to see when it would be good to start up the meetings again. Clark Summit, I know, has been working, their planning has been working on it electronically or through Zoom meetings. The other planning commissions, I'm not even sure if they're meeting at all at this point because I haven't heard anything from anybody. So it kind of gives them a little bit more room now to go through these ordinances a little bit more in-depth because we were kind of under the gun with the June 30th deadline, so I think it may be a positive.
Okay, good. Any questions for anybody, from anyone on Sapa? Keep chugging away. Let's go to floodplain.
Okay, with the floodplain, the August 5th deadline for the new maps going into effect has not been extended, so everybody still needs to get these ordinances in place. Last time I checked, we've had nine municipalities that have enacted. The ordinances are ready. They've been sent to FEMA. We have eight that still have not acknowledged anything from anybody. The remainder are in various stages of a draft ordinance, and there's actually 14 that are ready for adoption that Pima has looked at and given the green light on. The eight that still won't acknowledge, we've sent registered letters just to, you know, to make sure that they're aware. We know they're getting the emails and the letters, but we wanted the registered letter there so we know that they definitely got the correspondence.
Good. Anybody questions on floodplain mapping? Do you think they will extend it, the August?
No, they said absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Even with the virus?
Yep.
Wow.
I'm surprised, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. No other questions on floodplain?
Mary, I'm curious about the eight that haven't responded yet.
You want to know who they are?
I'd like to know who they are and if perhaps we can help to do some outreach or follow up with them.
Okay. Clark Screen, Dalton, Fell, Jessup, Old Forge, Scott, South Abington, and West Abington.
Okay, thank you.
I'm surprised with South Ab.
Yes.
The offices closed. We don't know, right?
They may be close to the public, but I'm pretty sure these people are working, you know, virtually or, you know, just in the offices with no access to the public.
If any of you have friends in any of those communities, please contact them.
I'll make a call to South Ab.
Okay. Liz, just checking, last time you told me music had not responded, but they have since?
Yeah, music was on the list, but they just came off because John Brazil, he's been working on the ordinance. I'm not sure if he's actually reached out to Leslie yet, but he is aware of what's going on, so hopefully, you know, they'll reach out to the municipal league soon.
Okay.
Mary, Liz, could you email us a copy of the letter that was sent?
The register letter?
Yes.
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Bruce, you're back. You have audio? Bruce? No. You know, there's a button up the top there. Maybe it's, you have it on mute or... Connecting to audio.
All right, I can hear you now.
There you go. Technology, wonderful when it works. Good.
I'm using my iPad instead of my computer because being fixed, so I finally figured it out.
Good. Glad you're with us. Thanks. Let's move on to, any other questions on floodplain? We're good? Good, let's move on to choo-choos. Steven?
Okay, there's really been no movement or access or anything on the rail study. The COVID kind of shut everything down. We still have the money available for the next round of work with the consultants, so hopefully, once the feds and the state open up back again, we can start moving forward on that. The big thing we were working on at the time was to get a meeting with the New Jersey officials, both the federal and state, and also the New Jersey Transit and the Northern Jersey Planning Organization, the NPO there, to get them up to speed on everything that's been done. So far, all we've had is some correspondence back and forth with them. We haven't really had any in-person meetings with a lot of the federal and state agencies or New Jersey Transit. We were shooting for an April date. We had a tentative date set up, and then everything kind of fell apart after the pandemic hit.
Price tags remain the same?
Yeah, we really haven't had any updates on anything yet.
Anybody, any questions on our rail study? Let's move on to hazard mitigation plan.
The consultant is working on it. We were supposed to have a round of another municipal meeting and a public comment meeting the end of this month. We're probably going to have to do something virtually, and the consultant is working on that. So as soon as we hear from them, we'll let you know how they're going to handle that. But according to Vision, they're still on schedule for the end of July.
Oh, good, okay. Any questions? APA, PPA, our annual conference. Going to get moved, pushed back?
I could talk to that if you want. Myself and Howard Grossman, who are co-chairs, are going to be on a conference call Friday with the board, the chapter board. They've got a lot of questions about whether it's going to be on, but they haven't really brainstormed about it yet. There are some thoughts that if it does take place, there are going to have to be, you know, changes made, obviously, because you only can limit so much per session, and especially with the lunches and the award sessions, that's going to have to be taken into consideration. They're also thinking about possibly doing virtual sessions along with an in-person conference, and if worse comes to worse, there may be just a virtual conference with sessions available to people who, especially people who need the CEUs. It has to be determined, and we're having a meeting on Friday to discuss a little bit further. Right now, it's still on, but we'll see how that goes as we move forward.
When was that scheduled for, Cindy?
October 18th to 20th, is that the date?
Yeah, that's it, I think.
We are, Mary Liz and I, along with Cindy, around the program committee, and we did review 61, well, actually it was 60 because there was a duplicate, 60 proposals for sessions. We did a ranking kind of thing and tried to look at what sessions would be needed, you know, for SLA and ethics and those kind of sessions. So we put together a list with Kim from the consultant who runs PPA. We put together a list and narrowed it down to about 40-some sessions that we were looking at. There's also a possibility that some of those sessions could be combined because they were very similar in tone. You know, some of them were 30-minute sessions, and we do have 90-minute slots, so possibility we could combine some of those. Along with that, I'm on the mobile workshop part of it, and we're holding off on the mobiles until we find out what the sessions are going to be because my idea was to tie in sessions to mobile workshops so that somebody could attend the session and then go out in the field and see what we were talking about. So that's where we're at right now with PPA.
Well, hopefully you can still pull it off.
Yeah. Cindy, what's the capacity for the conference? I think that, I think it's 500 is the Hilton can take. They usually have between 3 and 500, depending on where it's at. There was other certain locations that are, you know, within Erie, it's less populated. When it's in State College, it's like everybody goes. I don't remember what we had last year in Scranton, which was maybe eight, nine, nine years ago, but I think it was close to the 400 mark.
So they're on 375.
Yeah, so that's going to be a little bit of an issue. I mean, the sessions aren't too bad. You can probably social distance and have maybe two of the same sessions at different times. You know, it's the luncheons and the award ceremonies where everybody's gathered together. That's going to be an issue.
Thank you.
Going to be tough to social distance there.
Exactly, or like the Sunday night reception and that kind of thing like that. We might have to just have conference for programs only, you know. Who knows? We'll see.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Well, let's move on to development reviews. Let's do April. Steve?
Okay. Really, the only development review that we were going to discuss today was on page nine of the April agenda, the Springbrook curative amendment. This was kind of a unique one. A landowner in Springbrook requested a curative amendment to their ordinance to allow therapy animals use in an R1 zone district. And in reviewing the ordinance, really, therapy animals are not allowed and are not addressed, I should say. However, there are similar types of uses, medical facilities, physicians' offices, where therapeutic uses are allowed, so they would be in the C1, C2, and M1 zone. In reviewing it, we didn't think that there was a need to amend the ordinance to allow therapy animals in the R1 zone because then you're opening it up for other therapies, medical therapies in that zone district. And in looking at the ordinance, it looked like Springbrook wanted to limit those types of uses again to the C1 and 2 and the M1 zone districts. So we didn't feel the ordinance was discriminatory, so we did not recommend that they adopt the curative amendment.
Steve, just curious, what does Marley's Mission do? I mean, that's basically therapy. Do they have that municipality, it's in Newton Township right now, Marley's Mission?
Yes.
Do you know if Newton does anything like that, that you could look at?
I did not look at Newton, but I believe because that was a farm, they're either grandfathered in as a farm or they're in an agricultural zone and it would be allowed.
Okay, all right, gotcha.
I'm assuming they had to get some type of a conditional use or...
Probably.
Yeah, but it is probably an agricultural zone.
That makes sense, yeah.
This particular property is within a development, actually, in Springfield Township. It's a large parcel, and the property owner currently has goats. But it is within, it's off of a private road in a development.
Okay, hence the zone, okay.
Yoga goats, they step on your back?
I didn't have you hire.
I've only seen commercials, okay. Therapy, all right. I think I could use some of that. Any other developments we want to discuss today?
We might also just mention what our procedure has been originally. When the office was totally closed, we weren't accepting any plans. The governor's office did pass a, there was a resolution or a law passed that as of March 18th, I believe it was, all the offices were closed and the timeframes for reviewing and recommending to plans was basically put on hold, and we really wouldn't be starting back up until June. Since then, we've revised our procedures a little bit now that we've got some other avenues that we can do. So we are accepting plans for review. What we've done is we've put a box in the lobby downstairs in our building. If someone is going to drop, they're supposed to email either my boss or Mary Liz to let us know that plans are coming in. We will pick up the plans, and then between Matt, Mary Liz, and myself, one of us, most likely Matt, would review the plans, then email back whoever dropped them off that we've got them and any comments, noting that, you know, they would get the plans back after a board meeting. For signing and stamping plans, we've basically had the same procedure, but they would, again, notify us via email. We would get the plans stamped, notify the applicant that the plans are stamped by email. They could come back and pick them up out of the box. We had a little delay there for about a month or so that we weren't really reviewing anything, but now we're back to reviewing plans again. But as you can see from the agenda, they're not really coming in. Mayor, do you want to add anything to that?
No, no. I know a lot of the local planning commissions have not been meeting, so I'm assuming that's the reason why things have slowed down.
Yeah, makes sense, okay. Does that, that applies to all the locals on, all the local communities, correct, Steve?
Yes. It's Commonwealth-wide, so that includes planning commissions, it includes councils, that you have to adopt plans or recommend plans. So basically, every government agency does not have to do anything official until the expiration in June.
Are they all aware of this?
I believe so. I believe so. I know in our township, Madison Township, we did get a zoning hearing request for special exception use, which came three days after the governor enacted the state of emergency. So a letter was sent to the applicant explaining that their 60-day timeframe for the hearing does not start until May 20th, and that the hearing will be scheduled before July 19th, which is the expiration for zoning hearings. That's where we're at there. And I know this curative amendment that we talked about in Springbrook is the same thing. They haven't scheduled the hearing yet because of the state of emergency.
DCED and the Borough's Association and Township Associations have been getting the word out to their members.
Let's backtrack now that we have a quorum here, if we can, uh we have minutes from March and April to approve, April as much as we have for our minutes.
I move to approve.
Motion is second, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Um we also have our bills, everybody had a chance to look at the bills?
I have the actual bills here, if anybody has any questions on anything, I can clarify what they, they were.
Entertain a motion to approve the bills for both March and April?
Still move.
I'll second. I'll second.
Second by Cindy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Um any other business to come before the planning commission today? Any public comment? Is there any public out there?
Uh what we, what we did is, uh on the notice for the meeting that's on the website, uh if any from, anybody from the public wanted to comment on anything, they were supposed to email me by nine o'clock this morning, I did not get any emails.
Okay, good. And we have no other business. Anybody have any info for the good of the order? Nothing, huh?
Just stay safe.
By the way, Harry, are you in Florida or are you in Music?
I'm in Music.
Hmm, why?
I'm, I'm not flying, that's for sure.
No, you're right, yeah.
And I do have to drive. I'd have to stop twelve times on the way to Florida. Unbelievable. Hey, I want to thank all of you for coming, getting online today. Um I'm assuming we'll probably be doing this again next month.
Yep. And maybe for the foreseeable future.
Right.
You might be right, yeah. Um it's not so bad. Uh get an extra cup of coffee in the morning.
Right, there you go.
Okay, um hearing no other comments, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Wow, first time we heard from you, thank you, Bruce, second?
Second.
All in favor? Guys, thank you so much. Guys, thanks so much for getting into the office, appreciate all your help down there.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, Mary Liz, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Stay safe, stay healthy.
Stay safe. Bye-bye, guys. Thanks.